Cape Charles Town Council Regular Meeting for September 15th. Come to work, please, and roll call.
The town.
Right.
The town leader.
Bannon present.
Bannon present. Ryan present.
We have a call. Thank you very much. Let's stand for a moment in silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, there's flowers. I'd like to read you something. This is from Elizabeth Hume. This is relative to Elizabeth Hume, I beg your pardon. Elizabeth Hume, MMC of town of Cape Charles, earned the designation of Master Municipal Clerk, MMC, which is awarded by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, IIMC. Grants the MMC designation only to those municipal clerks who complete the mandatory education requirements and who have a record of significant contributions to their local government, to community, and state. The International Institute of Municipal Clerks, founded in 1927, has 10,300 members throughout the United States, Canada, and 15 other countries, and the mission of this global nonprofit corporation is to enhance the education, opportunities, and professional developments of its diverse membership. And on behalf of the IIMC Board of Directors, I am honored to endorse the conferring of MMC to Elizabeth Hume, MMC of town, of the town of Cape Charles. We share your pride and this achievement, and we applaud your support for the role Elizabeth plays in your city. Wonderful work, and I need to point out, you did this in how many years, three?
Two and a half.
Two and a half years versus five, which is normal. I'd also like to point out, she's the only clerk in the history of Cape Charles to achieve this designation. She's the only clerk on the eastern shore of Virginia to achieve this designation.[151.16][151.16](APPLAUSE) Not for this in particular, but for me.
I can't do that, take that.
Oh, I don't want to take it. Thank you, Eugene. Great job. Did I come out of your blood or her blood?[190.12][190.12](LAUGHTER) You're selling women for kids. Thank you. Okay, thank you all very much. We've had a few visitors and some presentations to do. The first is for Willie Lyons. John, can you accept this for Willie? I'd like to read this. Certificate of Commendation. This commendation is awarded to Willie Lyons in recognition of his quick thinking and brave actions on the morning of August 18th, 2016, when he observed a fire at 601 Peach Street. He called 911 and proceeded to wake the occupants of the residence. His actions helped minimize damage to the house and possibly save the lives of three people inside. So I would like to vote from the council, like a motion first, to approve this commendation in a second.
I'll make your motion.
Elevator?
Aye.
Aye. John, please, send this up to Willie. Give him our great thanks. Nice work. Thank you. Thank you for it. Next order of business is Constitution Week. I'll read the proclamation first, and we'll vote on it. This is proclamation 20160915, designating September 17th to the 23rd, 2016, as Constitution Week in the town of Cape Charles, Virginia. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2016, marks the 229th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, George Proto, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Cape Charles, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2016, Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In witness whereof, I add hereunto, set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Cape Charles to be affixed this 15th day of September, 2016. Motion? Is there any discussion here? I think we are all very blessed to live in a country with the kind of constitution that we have. I think we need to remember that and continue to support it in all ways possible. Have a motion of second or in favor?
Aye.
Then keep the motion passed. And then the last is a proclamation to National Friends of Libraries Week. This is proclamation 20160915A, National Friends of Libraries Week, October 16th through 22nd, 2016. Whereas Friends of the Cape Charles Memorial Library raise money that enables our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year, and whereas the work of the Friends highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to present. And whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. And whereas the Friends gift of their time and commitment to the library sets the example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now therefore, be it resolved by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the town of Cape Charles, I, George Proto, do hereby proclaim the week of October 16th through 22nd, 2016, as Friends of Libraries Week in the town of Cape Charles, Virginia, and urge everyone to join the Friends of the Cape Charles Memorial Library and thank them for all they do to make our library and community so much better, adopted by the town of Cape Charles on this 15th day of September, 2016. May I have a motion?
So make the motion.
I think most of you don't know, but the Friends of the Library have probably given the town $50,000 in money, if not more. It's done very quietly. If the library has a budget problem, they jump in and get the things that they need. And I think it's done very, very quietly, but it's in thousands and thousands of dollars in ways. Police Department right now is trying to become a friend of the library.[572.82][572.82](LAUGHTER)
Any other comments here? I think you all know how much I love libraries, but I like everything about the look, feel, and smell, and of course, the books. So thank you all very much. Is there a representative of the John Joe, can I get this to you?
You have a vote.
Oh, we didn't have...
It's a same party.
We have a motion of second?
Aye.
We're all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Keep you straight.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, very nice work. Appreciate it.
I'll make sure it goes in.
Okay. Next order of business, we have Ann-Hilary Walker to give us a report from the Wetlands Coastal Development.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thanks so much for the opportunity to share with you the results of our deliberations over the last, oh, five or so months since about the end of April. I'd like to acknowledge the other members of the board who are here. Bob Roche, Bill Stanton, Joe Ferrer. Belle Croquette was unable to join us tonight, and I'd also like to acknowledge the help that Larry DeRay has helped us, as well as the practical insight about the beach that John Lockwood has shared over the summer. So with that, we've done about 27 slides, constitutes our draft report. We haven't actually had time to vote on those as of board, so these are proposed recommendations. We're only going to give you kind of about half the slides, just to kind of give you the highlight. The rest of it has been delivered, so that you can read through the rest of it at your leisure. So the only point I want to make here is that there's a staff report that Larry DeRay provided to us on the 1st of June, and then that he kind of gave us a scope of work for us to look at. The key points are to kind of review the practices on the beach, to be aware of the Army Corps of Engineers project to nourish the beach with sand and add fencing and springing and plantaging, and sort of kind of take a holistic view of this, a review of everything, and see if there's some recommendations that the Wetlands Board, in this capacity, the Board could make, and possibly make some possible synergies with the Corps of Engineers. Our homework, I guess, and I sent a list of kind of the key references that we looked at, was a review of applicable Cape Charles guidance and information, information from Commonwealth of Virginia, including a report from VIMS on the shoreline evolution of the Chesapeake Bay shoreline in Northampton County that had been published in 2004, and some guidance generally on dunes that North Carolina Seaground, a lot of communities are referred to. And in addition to those documents, we reviewed multiple, approximately 23 plans from other communities of beach, new sand management plans, and another 35-plus documents. Key points is we took away that there are a lot of documents that deal with ocean beaches, ours is a bay beach, which means a little bit more shelter, and the ones that we paid special attention to were from the city of Norfolk and Virginia Beach, both of which have bay beaches. So the city of Norfolk, actually, I'll talk a little bit more about shortly. In addition to that, we saw public input. We thought it was important to hear from the citizens of the town about their thoughts and questions and priorities for the beach, so we developed a questionnaire and provided that at the information meeting where the Corps came and talked to us more about their plans on June 15th. We also arranged for a Norfolk, a visit from the city of Norfolk to come and meet with us and walk the entire beach on the boardwalk, all the way back down on the sand side before the Corps deposited the sand. That was about us, 9:00 in the morning until almost 1:00 in the afternoon. We did briefs at Red Fields and kind of captured everything. Then we had working sessions outside of permit meetings on June 1st, July 21st, and most recently, on August 31st. And then we did another one after, another beach walk after the sand was deposited on the 10th of September. This is the little form that we provided to some people, or to the people who attended the meeting on June 15th. So what we realized in looking at the town documents is that there are multiple goals and priorities related to the beach and the sand and the dunes. We wanted to make best use or opportunity of this beach nourishment from the Corps of Engineers. We recognize that the town beach is known for such views that shows up in a lot of different places, especially at the north end, where people could actually sit in their cars and look out, or golf carts. The beach is a vital town asset, obviously, for resident recreation, tourism-based economy, but there are also other things where they talk about sand management, and sand going into beach was a problem for people, not just for the Bay Avenue owners, but also for safety purposes for people trying to walk on the beach and other things. And plus, it's a loss of a resource that you have to pay for to kind of keep sand on the beach. There are other priorities related to managing the dunes, which are their guidelines and their values as a coastal system, and specifically in some of the language, you know, we want to stabilize the dunes. That's something that's written up in the comprehensive plan, and implement actions to avoid gentrifying FEMA funding when needed after storms. So kind of they're all, they're all there as drivers, and they're not all completely, you know, come together perfectly. They're a little bit of a competing. So note all the points of our review. I sent you the scanned copies of the set of the questionnaires that we received, so you can look at those. But public commented that, again, the view is very important. The dunes block the view. Really need to keep the sand off the streets. It's a safety hazard, especially on sidewalks, as well as the property. The sand has caused property damage and blocked beach and vision pure access. It's diminished views. The preferred, the three people recommended that the preferred height of the dunes would be no taller than three feet above the boardwalk. There was general, some general disbelief that the dunes actually prevent danger from storms, and some also recognize the dunes of people, and they need to keep people off them. So what was really, I think, I think it's fair to say, speaking with all of us, that we found it very useful and informative to talk with the city of Norfolk manager, Environmental Services, who's been in that position for over 30 years, to try and manage the bay beaches in Norfolk. And so he's had a lot of experience trying to apply science and knowledge and practitioner experience. He lives at Eastview Beach, and so they face a lot of the same issues that Cape Charles, and they do have some of the same wind exposures that we do, but the difference is that their beaches go right up to people's porches, whereas we have a public boardwalk and street before you have the houses. He did provide specific guiding points for managing the sand beaches and the dunes, and he pointed out that where we heard, you know, the dunes help prevent flooding, he said, "No, no, no, that's not quite right." Really, the essential value of the dunes is to attenuate the waves and prevent damage to, in our case, public property. So in other words, if you didn't have the dunes, you'd have the high waters erode the sand and the ground and part of the boardwalk, potentially the street, and create damage to public asset, not only to the beaches' public asset, but also the Department of Transportation, street, and then the boardwalk. So that's really the essential value of the dunes for us, and so we really want to clarify that as we go forward. Am I pushing it the wrong way? Okay. So the city of Norfolk approach is to, what we agree with, is that the idea is to have the dunes be low and broad, not narrow and high, and that's one way that you kind of mitigate the effect of the view on old view, but more importantly, you have to have it spread out over so that you have a longer barrier to the waves. So these are from some of their presentations, and I sent links to you guys, so you can go look. There are 130 slide presentations. But is this a laser thing? That little laser? I don't see it. It doesn't work. Okay. So you can see that they're saying A, B, G is American Beechgrass, and then they've got sea oats, and then canid grass. So the idea is you plant some plants in front of the dunes, others kind of on top, and then both Beechgrass, American Beechgrass is best on the front, on top of the dunes, and sort of different grasses on the back because you don't have as much salt exposure, and it's drier, and you don't have as much possibility of salt. So anyway, the way that they did it, they came up with that scheme in 2004, early in February. They planted latter part of February. They put out sound, sand, sand fences to just sort of define the areas, and then you can see 2013, how they had that low, broad dune. And so he's monitored this for years, and really feels like that's the best approach, the most practical approach. So based on all that and more, which you have on the slide, the rest of the slides, which constitute our draft report, so we had hoped to give you these recommendations that you can make as a basis for before they actually do the fencing, probably so you didn't make it. But, so I'm not sure I really need to go into these too much other, except that we've tried to indicate which ones are specifically for the town. So we've got excess sand, sort of at the south end. We should have some of the openings are, we don't need as many openings because here we need a people and an equipment opening at both ends of the beach in itself, but we don't need like that second opening close to Mason Avenue. You know, there's two pretty close together, so close that one, and open one that we can keep open next to the pier, and that will help keep the, you know, we can use that for maintenance, keep the sand off of here. Move any excess sand, fill in a shallow hole by Madison Avenue, which remains shallow. We didn't get enough sand from the Corps to really fill that in properly. We do have invasive species of grass on the beach, and so you'll see details in the package about that. And there is some of it down by the south end, so if we move excess sand, we don't want to take the invasive Japanese sedge, Asiatic sedge, and move it up to the middle part of the beach, so there's details on that. The volleyball courts need to be moved away from the base of the dunes, and the idea is we do have a wide enough beach now to encourage the dunes to move out onto the beach. There's slides, you'll see the photographs in the package. We don't, people don't use the whole beach, they use the edge of the water, so we now have enough prep to kind of move it out, and we have enough prep to also move the volleyball courts away from the toe of the dunes, because the more you step on that grass, the more they're going to erode it, and counteract the purposes and the values for which they have. So anyway, we, Corps of Engineers had planned to block all the accessways, and we noticed that when we do, you'll see the diagrams in the package. So I think they did not block all of them, but they did block some of them, so we think that's something that we need to do. We had hoped to make it in time to install the fences 20 feet away from the toe of the dune, to begin to allow them to plant and hide it, and therefore, again, encourage the dunes to move out, and not higher, but lower and broader, but we didn't make it. In order to, so the best time to plant American Beechgrass is in February, January, February, and March, and so we really encourage the town to purchase American Beechgrass now. Beyond, the Corps is not going to plant enough for what we need, and it only costs about $70 for a thousand square, which is some plant worth or full plants. And so they, the town in Norfolk gave us a source, potentially, and others, so Larry DeRay and John Lockwood calculated the number of plants that we need. They have to be planted. We think there are lots of volunteers. New Roots has sort of waved a hand. The school has an ag class, or others who could possibly do that. We think we should close the access at the Neptune statue. In other words, more places you have openings through the dunes, then you can't really have continuity of the structure, so just keep one ending around, and to stop moving any mechanical activity of the operator of the beach near the toe of the dunes immediately. So that was supposed to be like, before they put in the fencing. We thought we had another week or two before they were going to do that, but. So then we had recommendations to implement in the fall of 2016, prior to winter, after the Corps completed their project. So to, the one thing you shouldn't have is the walkway to go perpendicular through, but they should be angled away from the women. So that's something that we could do, and then add sand to fill in and plant American Beechgrass immediately, you know, so they don't erode during the winter. The town could install multiple rows of sand fencing at the south end, running east to west, and at the north end to mitigate the sand, which has now been deposited from blowing down the beach, and we can talk about the layout of that. We'd like the Sub Public Works Superintendent, this is not, we're not blind siding him, so to develop a winter sand hangings plan with order of the city, down the street, through the sidewalks, and install some fencing. Consensus of everybody that it is a town responsibility to keep the sidewalk clear. And some of them are terribly laden with sand, and very difficult, especially for older people. Okay. Another thing to do, January, March, 2017, is go, once you, so the reason you have to order the Beechgrass now is because it has to be grown, because you can't just go pick up a thousand plants or more in January. So you've got to put in more than now, so that they can go up and you can get it. So plant the American Beechgrass where thick grass growth is needed to create the lower wider dunes, and according to the plan, you know, what we had in number 13, stay on top, stay during the winter, stay on top, keeping the boardwalk, street curbs, sidewalks, clear sand protection and safety. We gave you a couple of examples. We'd like you, we invite you to go in the Corps and review slides 46 to 48 for details on plant cost. They've given a breakdown on, you know, sand fencing is more expensive than grass and all that stuff, so we've got a link of that, and the cost information is there, but there's lots of other great stuff there, if you'd agree. January, March, 2017, to catch the sand and build up the beach in lower area between Monroe and Madison, then a four-foot strip of Spartina patterns, which is a Beechgrass which has a little bit better tolerance for saltwater, so when the salt does overwash and hide water vents, it'll survive, and so it'll tolerate that, and that'll give the American Beechgrass space and time to extend seaward and build up lower wider dune. And there is actually a full small patch. Buzz is our resident local knowledge, and has been here a lot of years, and has spent an awful lot of time observing and caring about the beach, and so I want to acknowledge his special skills and information, and helping us review all of this. So spring and summer, 2017, you should fertilize the American Beechgrass with that fertilizer, but we're not quite sure how often. You know, maybe just do it once a year, maybe not every once a year, so we've got to check on that. For newly forming dunes at the north end, it'll be a boardwalk side, so you know, you picture it, right? So they grow up a little bit on the boardwalk side, leave a five-foot buffer between the toe of the dune and boardwalk. Refine and replant the straight side of the dunes in that five-foot minimum path. The town planner, the Board can develop a vegetation plan for the length of the boardwalk. There's some example considerations, and there's a picture, actually, the city of Norfolk has a whole plan live, things that work in this area, so we haven't drilled down into that yet. First things first. So additional recommendations. We'd like to think that the town should have some good practice guidance about using mechanical equipment on beach to give the operators and train them, find a way to go about this, and for example, when there's vegetation merchant over there with the mechanical equipment, plan, but you know, it's easy, it's obvious much to think about it, but if you're out there and you haven't been told anything, it's not obvious. So we're just saying, let's help the guys do a good job. They are really on top of things, and we recognize the limited resources of the town in all capacity, so we're trying to be as thoughtful about that as possible. We really encourage you to plan and budget for ongoing maintenance, both routine, preventative, and proactive before storms. Annual planting of American Beechgrass is needed. After the tourist season, let the beach naturalize over the winter, which means, you know, sand when, you know, seaweed is there will help catch sand. So again, we want to keep the sand on the beach, not have it blow down Bay Avenue on people's lawns, and to really budget for sand nourishment, which of course, now we've got a lot of sand, so we just have to plan for using that to re-nourish the beach periodically, regularly, I should say. So the town should also develop some new signs to protect the dunes from foot traffic and mechanical. We've got good signs, but we think, based on what the city of Norfolk suggested, you know, it couldn't hurt to have a few more that claim maybe the value of people, educational things. And I think this is our last slide. We'd like to ask the council to review our wetlands and dune ordinances, because they're very dated from, I don't know, 1994, and for example, this particular activity was not covered under our existing scope, so we'd like to, I think, we'd like to say that we would welcome the opportunity to continue to support the town, but we feel like we ought to have some written guidance on that, so we'd like you to update our charter perhaps. We think that the town should go ahead and develop a beach and dune management plan. We've got lots of references on that. It should include recommendations for ongoing beach nourishment, some of the other things that we mentioned, and we are willing to help develop an outline for you all to consider. We'd like to ask the Corps of Engineers for their dune survey data, which is really great, so we ought to capture that and not have it disappear. So that's taking measurements. And you can do that mechanically, but then talking with them, they said, don't do that because we have everything done by GPS. Don't create any new measurement points because then it takes time to compare apples to oranges. So use our monitoring points, but we ought to probably have a conversation with them about what, what it would take for them to come over and shoot those measurements on a more regular basis. And the last, most importantly, our current walkways through the dunes is really not a good recommended practice by anybody. And so open pile walkways are the best practice or good prac, actually best practice, but good practice for walkways across the dunes. We realize that that's an expense. So we'd like to ask you to consider that if you're budgeting going forward. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. That's a great presentation, a lot of detail in it. I have a lot of questions that I don't think are appropriate to this forum, any more technical kinds of questions. Is anyone from council having questions?
I would just ask, so this doesn't fall into a black hole and disappear. Stay on top, really go after it. Because there's been enough complaints over the past four years of un-sanding everywhere.
Well, you're right.
So I don't know what the next step is, but no, let it just start.
Right.
One of the more, just to get the full report, which at this point I have not yet seen. So I'm anxious to see that and take some time to read it. I'm overwhelmed at the comprehensiveness of this effort and I love the whole group for what you've done. I think it is way more than I was expecting and it's very encouraging that we can, we've got a group that has that much knowledge now that can continue to advise going forward.
Who are we, who are the dune board members here standing up?
Russ, Bob, Joe.
And Bill is missing.
And Bill's missing.
Bill's out of town.
So look, you had some requests for things the town will really need to do, but I think we're going to need a lot of it from you all. For example, you want your charter updated. So I think council would be very receptive to all those recommendations and receptive to even changes in ordinances. That is something that is useful to do.
The dune ordinance cannot be changed. That would be written by the state. And you can't change the word in that. That, that has to stay. But the other ordinance that covers the creation of the dune board responsibility would be considered altered.
Yeah, well, whatever you all have in mind, on the road, we may need to have a work session on this and I agree with Chris, I don't want this to fall through cracks. You all did a great job. Any other comments or questions? Oh yeah, yeah.
And I'd like to suggest that the wetland and dunes board try to quantify what they think the town charter, places where the town charter should be changed and how they should be changed. Because you, I believe, have done a lot of research. So you obviously have found deficiencies, so point us in the right direction.
But just a simple answer is it pretty much, it just talks about processing permits. So for example, something like this is really beyond just a simple permit action renewed and responding to permit. So I think in, in the past, you must, kind of correct me if I don't say this quite right, but way in the past, I've been on it for about 10 years. So before me, there were, it was more of a routine practice for the board being consulted by the town on various matters. It's, you know, kind of an extra set of eyes. I sort of look at this as your kind of stack capability maybe to expand the capabilities of the town. And so I think, but that hasn't been a practice anymore for a long time. So I think we'd want to say that we are open to renewing that practice that was from many years ago. And I think it's fair to say that we, we've invested, somebody said we've invested enough of ourselves in this process that we would like to continue that investment in our town.
We agree. Thank you very much. This town depends on the beach for a huge amount of resources and its economy. And it also makes the town much pleasanter place to live. So we don't want to let this drop. Okay, there's nothing else? Let's go on, we are now coming to the comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I signed it.
Jennifer Kett did submit comments in writing that he wanted to write into record. He said, "I'm not able to attend the September 15th, 2016 town council meeting, so making my written comments regarding the wetlands opposed to dune board presentation, public beach recommendations to the council. I thank the council for providing the time for this important subject. As a member of the wetlands and coastal dune board, I along with the entire board participated in substantial research and discussion in creating this presentation. Recommendations are the unanimous judgment of the board and I support them without reservation. As a resident of Cape Charles, I urge the town to act now to formalize the beach management plan and to provide the necessary resources for its implementation. The economic and recreational value of our public beach cannot be understated."
Thank you very much. All right, the final public comment is closed. Going on to approval of the agenda format, they have a motion to approve the agenda format.
I don't think anybody can make a change.
Yeah, I am not. We're going to cover that in a work session. We have one next week and I think that would be, that's a good thing. Yes, motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Need a motion to approve the minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No discussion, all are favor approving the minutes.
All right.
Motion approved, treasurer's report.
The new rule on the cash on payments at the end of August is $2,247,880. Restricted in reserve cash balances, $1,359,051 for total cash in all accounts of $3,606,937. That's a $70,000 increase over July. There's no debt service until November. Running towards extended church. Yearly for general funds, we have $289,81 in revenues. We've expended $453,821 for a net balance of negative $164,741. Public utilities, net revenue, first revenues of $282,888. Expenditures of $191,231 for a net balance of $90,857. The harbor, first revenues of $157,740. Expenditures of $177,966 for a net balance of negative $20,226. Sanitation fund, revenues of $31,849. Expenditures of $17,324 for balance of $14,535. Any questions? Answer to last month's question about the harbor revenues. That large, the increase, the decrease this year over last year was mostly due to clamp sand and the other was an accrual that was done to pull deferred revenues for the coming The other two reports I sent in the weekly report, is any other questions about those? If you want to move them.
I do not. Anyone else, any questions? All right, thank you. The motion to approve the treasurer's report is submitted.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Treasurer's report is approved, that's submitted, thank you. Next, please, the president.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Clerk, the council, I have one correction or update. As the monthly stamp report under short history view board, at the time the stamp report went out, we had no application for the appropriateness since the 20th. Two received before the deadline. So we have two new applications as well as continuing some application from prior. That's my update. Any questions? I have to.
I have no questions, anyone else? I'm asking, we talked about signage and where it is in the town. Like the Worcester Farm has the nice red sign sitting down at the corner. The library sign by the Baptist Church sends you towards the beach and I don't know if we're going to the Matthews County Library, but so left turn to get to our library. So where do we stand with signage?
If it's, if it's your pleasure, signage is meaningful. Signage can be that right by the require, be that permit, which is a process, but it's not an impossible process. If signage is to be turned over to the main street people for the purpose of branding, then that's, you have to be, set a time that can be turned over.
Anything to add, comments? Thank you very much, let's go on. Go to force link. Question from Ed, is council having any questions for? You remain very busy. You're being a busy winner. Good, that's good. Questions? No questions, thank you very much. See.
You guys, first thing, a big question is what the tent down to Harbor was installed yesterday and it's part of the dock float. We had a boat build this weekend. Do you have any other questions?
What are the dock fees? Because in 2014, 15, there are none and they also, right now. But the 456 number is $93,000. What's that?
The biggest thing is me coming in with very little history and stuff to go on and nobody to show access and a lot of inefficiencies of the way things were put in in the past. So we went with a catch-all of dock fees.
Does that pertain to anything above it, like the nightly, the weekly, the monthly?
All of those.
Does? Does that number, is that added into this number, the 296? At the bottom?
Yes.
Well, it's a catch-all for every time. I mean, is that a duplicate number of all the other ones?
The way things were being put in QuickBooks is if you, if me coming in, trying to learn everything and the way things were built in the past and the changes we had made to make corrections, if you had clicked on the right box for QuickBooks for that entry, it was wrong.
Well, yeah, what I'm getting at is here, is that $93,000 is a duplicate of all the numbers above the highest?
It's not a duplicate, it's an addition to.
It's an addition to.
Right, if you add all of these up, it's 12,000. And that is feet. Because the way things were built, that's another reason why there's a big difference between.
You've got to kind of figure out a way to get how many boats will be in there feet? That doesn't just tell us any time. It's 456 feet, but how many boats do that? Because I see this year versus the last company where the harbor's been pretty much empty in my opinion, from what I've seen. I mean, it almost reflects in the treasurer's report versus prior year. I mean, it's just, it's confusing to me to have these numbers the way they are. I guess you have to think that another way. There are some issues to track.
And we are, we're working on that.
Yeah, I know.
But coming, me coming in, finally learning the system and then all of a sudden this May, June, July, August, that wasn't the time year to make any changes. It was trying to figure out and learn, continue to learn the system and learn how to update it.
So we've got some on floor just for.
Yeah, generally we've had two computer crashes and lightning strikes and we just now did a QuickBooks update two days ago. Once everything flies down, then we can get them to work on, to make everything function like it should so that the building is proper and it's not done by hand.
Charlie, when do you think you'll be able to have this all straightened out? Do you have a date in mind?
Once we get everything running like it should, a couple months.
So what do you think, Brad? We did it in October, but you think you want to have this straightened out as well?
Yeah, and we, we're working on it. We have the numbers. We just have to straighten up QuickBooks. We weren't going to do anything to it until we did the update.
Right.
And that happened two days ago. And we're still, we're still working progress. A lot of things have been working progress.
I say, you've got some thought, talk to Brad and if you just let council know and address, let council know what you think you'll be able to get this straightened out.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, the bottom line is 230, 231 versus 296, I don't know if that's in over 1415 and 1516. Would be that much higher than those previous years or no? I don't see it. This is our past, I don't see us making those in there. That's what I'm trying to get at, are these numbers accurate from, from a standpoint of prior, prior years? Or is the addition of the other funds that are coming from prior?
Be as accurate as the numbers I can get out of QuickBooks from previous years. We're still, I don't know, it should be higher.
I can work with Charlie.
You know what I mean?
I'll look at what we have in edits, what we've looked. QuickBooks lately has been just most for, so I can look at what we've put in edits over the past and just match and make sure, verify.
Yeah, just, just here's the, there's almost the, these numbers are actually what was $50,000, $60,000 difference for.
We're really busy.
In the prior, prior years. Less clamp sand, you get that much, but I don't think this is.
It's all shifts, clam slam, anything against the harbor.
Yeah, but that's in the prior years, but this, this year we couldn't have it.
You had more.
Yeah, I have $60,000 higher. That's what I don't get.
Clamp signs in this case would be, because it's in August.
Yeah, but I want to get that, is, was that in 2015, 16?
Yeah. Last August.
Well, we'll come back to this with the date and get this straightened out.
Yeah, we have a work session if you want or whatever we need to do to, you know.
Right.
You know, for all the, you know, these are as, as current, as current can be, you know, with previous issue.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Big yard library.
Any questions?
You had a great summer, didn't you?
Yes.
It's interesting how many people from out of town who are here on vacation use the library and how many kids use it. That's great.
I think the hot summer was good for us because you can't take a two-year-old beach in, you know, a hundred degree weather. So we had people that would come in the library, they'd spend two hours with the kids reading and planning. We had families that would never tell us that if we went to the library, and they would say this is one of the best things you ever had in the library. And we loved the library, so.
Wonderful. That's good. You need to go to the library or Brownlow? Actually, you go to Brownlow for, you take it to the library.
You want to get two or so much ice cream for the afternoon?
Okay, good. Police department, anything to add?
No. We've been trying everything we can, marveling at many things.
I, I got two comments. First of all, I noticed there were four felony arrests and I asked how many hours that takes on average for police officers' time. And the standard is about 40 hours for a felony arrest from the International Association of Chiefs of Police. So that's a lot of officer's time that you're talking about there.
Which is what it is. Which is what it is.
Yeah, no. It's a lot. And the other thing I noticed is you completely classed the community policing.
Yeah. I did, uh, bias-based policing this week.
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
Bias-based policing, I did that this week.
Okay.
And radar research, radar training, basic training.
Good. Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you.
Uh, utilities. I have nothing to add. Is there a question from Counsel?
Any questions, anyone?
Everything is going smoothly. Everything is going smoothly and half a light.
There you go. Light is good.
Good. Public Works? Anything?
They're telling me it's boring. Ah, it's boring, huh?
That's good.
And I noticed there has been a response to Miss Coulter's letter, which is good. How many people are, or how many people are in the, uh, Public Works Department right now? Is it a full staff or is it understaffed?
No, we're down one. We're down one in, uh, Public Works and down one in the Worcester plan.
Are we advertising?
Yes. We have, uh, some applications. We're getting ready to interview these.
Thank you. Recreation?
Just a few things. Does anybody have a question?
Either microphone or a much.
Okay. Anybody have a question? Why do you have a question? Um, next weekend, uh, the twenty fourth, I believe, there'll be an Out of Darkness Walk in town at Suicide Prevention. So you'll see a lot of activity. They're doing a complete lock-in town walk, the outside.
That's cool.
Um, Out of Darkness, Suicide Prevention. They're gonna be doing a cookout after and then they'll be, we'll be on the beach. So you'll see a big wall upstream on the beach. They have a company put in, so I'm confident that everything will be done correctly. They're not setting up themselves.
I, I, can you explain a little more? I didn't quite get what Out of Darkness is.
It's Suicide Prevention. All the money that is raised will go towards the local Suicide Prevention Hall. Um, and then I'm sure most of you've heard, uh, Virginia Tourism Commission will be coming through on the, the, twenty seventh.
September twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh.
Since we're gonna do that during my announcements, but since you're doing a great, rather do it now.
Okay.
This is the letter that I got from, if you would like, we can read that. Is it an oyster roast?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Please join Eastern Shore of Virginia Tourism Commission and the Virginia Tourism Corporation, the Welcome Tourism Professionals from across the Commonwealth to Virginia's Eastern Shore at a late September oyster roast in one of Cape Charles. Meet forty Virginia's frontline travel counselors from welcome centers around the state and small of state tourism and economic development firms. We are leading this group on a three-day whirlwind tour of Eastern Shore, Virginia. We will visit Cape Charles, Washington, Frank and Ancocks, Saks and Shake and Take. We'll see two refuges, one state park, and a rain tide center, representing seven cultural spots, a camp ground and a crab cooking house. We'll stop at a gourmet food producer, NASA, Bay Creek, the Chesapeake Bay meal station, Silver Beach Y N C A and Chatham Diners. We will feast on the beach at two museums, at a waterside restaurant and in a fishing village. Along the way, we will introduce the group to what is involved with aquaculture, arts and culture, history, culinary, winemaking, marine space science, ecotourism, conservation. The groups will have two underwater experiences, a bike ride, a hawk talk and free time to explore small coastal towns. They will leave with a profound understanding of why the E S B A is so special. If you can make it, then do an advance for R S P P promptly. R S P P by return tomorrow, please. So just to let you know, we'll be at Cape Charles from three to five, I believe, on the twenty seventh. We'll open the shop, the local shops. So I encourage everybody to get out and make the town a busy. Because unfortunately, one of our slower dates, Tuesday tends to be. All the businesses will be open, which is good. And as I said, I didn't realize you moved yet, cause I just got a call yesterday. They have moved the oyster roasts down, so it will be, um, up by the bathhouse. There's good news as well. Excited about that. Um, and then two things to kind of go together. Um, I had a young lady come in my office a couple weeks ago. She has been shopping and buying stuff to be on progressive dinner tour for the last three years. This year did not have the progressive tour, so she was a little upset. Um, so she wanted to know, she actually talked to Tammy first and Tammy sent her today and I waited and called Tam because she wouldn't want to be away. Um, we're gonna try to expand the good trail this year to include, um, five AVs and five houses as well um, to kind of preserve, I think a lot of people willing to do that for the rest of dinner tours. So, um, preserve a little bit of that. It will, as always, be, um, no monetary admission, but we do ask for donations for this year. We will be adding food pantry or food bank.
Except for it's in town.
The food pantry, um, will be your admission. The library always accepts CDs, um, DVD, not CDs, DVDs and books. So that is your entry into this wonderful event. And a lot of Tammy and I were talking. Tammy always has really great ideas. Um, one of the things we've been struggling, a lot of our nonprofits, um, volunteers. And, um, I had had a really good conversation with Carol Evans not too long ago. They have a unique greet in their neighborhood because a lot of new people already been found. Then suddenly people show up with a snow and wine and cheese. Um, so there are new people here and a lot of them don't know how to get involved. They're new to me, they just haven't met the right person yet. They don't have Tammy. Um, so we are planning a community volunteer fair. We're gonna invite all the nonprofits out, all the churches, um, anybody who just has a presence in this town, or any volunteers to be able to kind of recruit volunteers, let people who are just new to know what we're about. You know, I will have Tammy, citizens of Central Park, the library board. Um, Trenton, he has done some really great stuff in the past couple of years with kids. They currently have a soccer camp, you know, surely they can, which is more volunteers. They always throw the, um, great foundation, they always have a hot chocolate. So a chance to kind of grab some of those new people while they're fresh and give some of us, what we're folks that have been doing a little break, but happy to be like this.
What are some of the?
We originally, we had a date all set. We were excited, we were ready to get geared up, we were ready to get headed to Central Park. There's so much competition and all for events. It's probably gonna end at the beginning of Civic Center because it's gonna be pushed further into fall or maybe cooler. But, um, we're still working on it. We had one, Tammy called today, um, to bring up the night fair. Anybody who never expects the night fair on Eastern Shore, has a big ring out of the kid.
It's great.
I don't want to repeat that. I'll make it happen.
What's your interaction with Tammy nowadays?
Um, Elizabeth is absolutely awesome. Um, she does what she can. She's, she's, um, the, 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 yes. She's, she's always contacted us to see what they can do in town. Um, whenever we have events, she's always finding volunteers for us. Um, the Great Elimination last year, she brought people to, or not Great Elimination, it was very festive Friday. She brought people in for the Luminary's out. Um, she is very helpful. She is posting stuff that, um, she goes out and books her stuff, um, without us having to contact, hey, we're having this in Cape Charles.
Sure, they're, uh, clear.
Yes, yes, they are. They post stuff, yes. So she, she's been, or good. I think her time, I don't know if she's full-time or not, so, she has, she does great things.
I don't know. I'll find out. I'll find out what it was.
Good, good. She, the town's good, you're a town representative. Oh, good, okay. I used to be.
I was, I was planning to say something about volunteers during my remarks.
I took all your time.
I, I, I know, I think it's great. I'm really happy that you're gonna.
It is, it's a great thing. And Tammy and I are gonna be talking soon. Um, the farmer's market, I knew it'd be great because over the years, I've got so many people talking about farmer's market. They just needed somebody to, and somebody to get the, and we've been talking a lot of other events that, you know, I, I, I'm here all the time. Like this would be great and people just kind of don't know where to start. So we're gonna be working on some really fun and stuff to do in the town, so we're really excited. I want, I almost feel like I should, here's my summer plan to follow up. I always use follow-up and playing with the summer. The summer's good. You know, the people are here, there's stuff to do, the libraries are, I think, it's the shoulder season that I want to focus on. But to bring people in town and, you know, follow, and, and festive Fridays was such a great thing last year. You know, things like that. I feel like if I could get people started, that's why I did the, um, open market again here, just kind of fantasy and then let some of these groups take over.
That's good.
I hope you guys agree to make it. If you don't, please let me know if you have a difficulty.
My, my concern is, is, is volunteer burnout.
They, they have.
We have actually a very, I think, a very active community, but we also do a lot of things and I've heard everyone get involved. I'm concerned about the farmer's market. The farmer's market has been a great success. If you have not been there, you should go and look at how nice it is. Also, we do think about holding out.
Yes.
About there and kind of other things as well.
There's so many great places. If you don't, don't, there's any, please, anybody contact me. I can convince you to agree, I promise you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No, no, no. I'm just, I'm just going to sign off. Your sins.
No, it was back.
Uh, I mean, two things were noticeable this summer. One was Cherrystone's just sending a bus into town regularly. And getting in at Cherrystone, other years, as I tried to get out of East Borough, like with the communist. So that was a big thing. And there's a bus that comes over every Wednesday from Williamsburg, from all the motels. They advertise, if you're tired of the skirts and revolutionary war things, go to a trip to Eastern Shore. They stop at the, uh, nature preserve. I think they stopped at, uh, Kipper Peak. They walk the air hall and then, uh, occasionally for a luck comes and do the guardians. For a luck comes out and, you know, awes them. They come back to, uh, uh, Roche House for lunch and then they have two hours downtown shopping. So that was, that was what we surprised about. They've enjoyed it for about three years. I didn't know about it.
Sunset also has a bus.
Is Sunset coming up? You're supposed to.
Sunset's the reason Cherrystone did.
Yes.
Exactly.
I understand Sunset.
So with regard to this Eastern Shore, Virginia tour, if you see someone in town, pretty sure they're from out of town. Free, welcome to Cape Charles, glad you're here. This is a great opportunity for us. We want them to go back thinking that on the Eastern Shore here is Cape Charles and some other stuff.
And this association has a nice packet.
Yeah, they do.
On our map, so that's.
Okay. Next order of business, Cape Charles Community Trail update.
This is Mr. Maritown Council. Staff report was in here, packets. Let's skip to, you're familiar with the project. We expect the mid-set center, we're gonna provide us a concrete crew to start installation of some storms first. Some of the current weather cycle, etc. Get that, unfortunately, currents just yesterday contracted out of some wires. This was a Verizon charter and a C V C, just to pay communications, so we're working through that. The contract is working through that, I should say.
Overhead?
Underground. Voice, uh, Washington Avenue. But if I was, if I had any questions, Counsel.
I have no questions. Counsel, can I have a question? Is there a completion yet?
Yeah, there's, uh, included in this, I believe it's a hundred twenty-eight term. So four months, um, I think they should.
What's that, right for?
Yeah, right at all.
Well, what, you don't, you, you're, sorry, big questions. Okay.
They're within their time for this one.
Any, anything else? Traffic's running out. Next order of business is, uh, is, uh, Planning Commission, uh, reappointments. Planning Commission reappointments.
This is Mr. Maritown Council, Dennis McCoy and Dan Burke, uh, currently serving the Planning Commission. In terms of who expire, thirty-first of October. Uh, they both expressed an interest in, expressing an interest in continuing to serve on the Planning Commission. And staff recommends Counsel reappoint, uh, Mr. McCoy and Mr. Burke, Planning Commission for another four years.
I'll make that note.
I second you.
They are reappointing. Uh, the next major business is, uh, we're telling the E S member.
Sir, Mr. Maritown Council, uh, this is Jay White. During service, Vice Chair for E C A, for presenting appeals. Uh, during term is due to expire the same day after recently, close two thousand sixteen. He has expressed an interest to continue to serve on the board and staff recommends Counsel reappoint. Uh, J A to the Board of Presenting Appeals for, uh, five years. But if you're tired of everybody.
Make a motion, some of, second, full in favor or not. Sir, would you, would you, would you? We are now appointing the Mayor, Counsel, comments. Are there any comments? Listen to that.
Couple. Friends of the library have set the dates for their winter and spring tease. There'll be tease in November, December, February, March, April and May. The dates have been set. Not all of the speakers have been finalized yet, so just announcing the dates. Uh, the Friends of the Library are also offering, um, computer tutor, free one-on-one sessions for i, phone, iPads, Androids, um, your PC. And they will be twice a month, one-hour session, one-on-one, three instructors from one to four on a Thursday and one to four on a Saturday for people. They need to make reservations in advance and identify what specific topics they're interested in to get the right instructor here with them. Um, there's a phone number. You can visit the Friends of the Library, jump on the library website for more information. That's from the Friends point of view. I would like to ask that we set us a strategy work section sooner rather than later. Get it on, get it on the calendar. We didn't have one last year. I think you really need to get one. I'd also would like, um, at the next council meeting to get feedback on the progress of the parking lot behind Mason Avenue. We had allocated money to put in lighting and to improve the, the road. And, um, I don't see anything, it doesn't mean nothing is happening yet. And I know there's a lot of paperwork that has to go on, but I would like a report on that status at the next council meeting. Those are my comments.
Okay. Thank you.
To jump, to jump on Jones', uh, parking lot. Two people said to me, why did we have the entrance down by the library? Cause when people come into town, you know, they can turn right in there and park. Instead of going all the way down to the library and turning around and coming back. That's just something that we should draw up a couple of people.
They should say inversion.
Inversing.
Inversion.
We've, we've actually discussed flipping it because for one, the sign is much more visible if we reverse it.
Yes.
Yeah.
The sign that currently the entrance sign is very cluttered with utilities and other visual obstructions, if you will. Uh, seeing a cloud and a person is important to see it. There's also been discussions about attention for two-way traffic uh, within the lot where now it's considered to be one-way. So we've got it up with two entrances or ingresses and ingress points, uh, from that lot. So those are the things we're looking at right now. We'll definitely be able to report something back to you.
Just one. We have a visitor last week for the Main Street program, provided a lot of good information. And asked for a set of milestones for implementation. Uh, there's a lot of parts that need to take place. There's a lot of, um, involvement that needs to take place. It involves the whole town. Uh, and I think we need to get those dates and my, as milestones set and published so we can get the process started. It is, uh, time to move. Uh, I think we're energized to do it, but again, based on everything I've heard, it is a lot of work. And, uh, I think the results will be well worth it. And just to follow up on something Chris said earlier, I would recommend we hold off on sign changes until we get Main Street moving as branding and signing. on sign changes until we get Main Street moving. There's branding and signage, and weight binding is one of the things they do. And I think there are grants available to help with some of that. Thank you.
Same hope.
I guess with what happened with, uh, the tourism and kind of the last, the word we got. Are we reaching out as town to either board supervisors, local chambers, and can you give them any kind of calendar of what's going on in town, so we need to kind of rest on what's going on? I see a whole lot of different, oh, black tomorrow. A lot of people don't know what's going on. Because I'm on a bunch of wards. It's very funny to see how many people know about certain things and how many people don't know about certain things that they also know about. Um, I mean, it says basically, because our information is sending an email, just having a cool email, I'll to all those people, just give them kind of, you know, an overview of what's happening during the week, or upcoming weeks. It's just more of us opening communication between all these groups. So, you know, the questions will be asked where, you know, a person says, "The Virginia Tourism says what's going on." They might spark a, "Oh yeah, yeah, this is coming down the pipeline." Instead of finding out, be left at hour, and scrambling around trying to make it work. I mean, I see that happen all the time. I don't know, I mean, I'm just trying to say, if we can be more proactive, feeding more information out to these other organizations so that they know what's going on. Because they don't redo that. They don't do a lot of stuff that I, or that I, or we didn't know about. I'm just trying to be, be more proactive doing.
Well, do you see this copy of the happenings every time I issue it?
Well, I'm talking from town, town standpoint.
Well, the town gives me stuff, and I would be happy.
Yeah, I'm more or less coming from the town, is what I'm thought.
Look at it, look at it.
Jen, Jen Lewis does send everything to the chamber and the tourists, the Eastern Shore tourism.
Right. How about board supervisors?
Probably not.
I mean, it's a good idea. I think we should really start up communication with those guys. So they know what's going on. It's gonna be a good thing along.
It will. Anything else?
Oh, on anything. It's hard. We really don't have the newspaper. We really don't have our heels taken.
Yeah, I understand.
It's, it's, you know, it's the tom-tom telephone pole or what we're gonna send down. It's hard.
Okay, so. We can, we can get things sent. I think we should be adding a, what they, Lois, right? Uh, all right, I, before we go on to my comments, what I got out of here is, I want to capture these, these things that are sort of follow-up items, and it's so they, so we make sure we address them and, uh, we use. So we have a Saturday work session that Joan has requested.
Strategic work session.
Strategic work session.
Not just Saturday.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, the next council session, status of parking.
Yeah.
Discussion on the reversing, reversing where the entrance to the parking lot is. And then, and then, uh, the milestones or timeline, I don't know, to the Main Street venue. Yeah, well, we may discuss these in work sessions. Or we may discuss them at a town council meeting. We may say, "Well, we're just not gonna do this." But, but I don't want to let them just be out there and die. Uh, and then, reaching out to the Chamber of Commerce and Board of Supervisors and schedule a calendar. Chamber of Commerce is done, we're just gonna add to the Board of Supervisors. So we're good to go on that. Okay, so miss anything?
Jones, and what do we have to follow up on that?
Follow up and do some weapons board recognition.
And Harbor, I just remember.
Uh, he's gonna give us a date.
Just dating what, two, four?
Harbor, uh, Harbor's, uh, report. Okay, and I think that will wind up being work session. Okay, is there anything else? Okay, good. So I don't, I don't have too much. One, I, I got a note, uh, actually from Nancy Vest. The Virginia World War One Centennial Commemoration is looking for historic sites in Virginia to add to the tourism map. So, and, and she says we are the home of the first memorial library in Virginia. And if you look, do I have the stained glass in the back? This is dedicated to World War One veterans. Uh, so, so I think down the road, I'm, I will be looking, I would want to be looking at, um, getting us on this registry of historic sites. I had some contact with, uh, Ken Denny from the Historical Society. They have, and she says we have many images, artifacts, and stories of interest. They're going to be putting together a small exhibit to be installed in the, in the glass library case. Uh, they're going to have a larger expedition about local veterans. That's from all errors, not just World War One. It'll be installed in the museum during the spring of two thousand seventeen. And they are going to be holding an artifact open house on Monday, September twenty-sixth at the museum, to accept names, item donations, and personal stories for possible inclusion in this exhibit. Uh, as well as, they're gonna plan to install in something in summer about the Cape Charles Elementary School. There'll be, there's a bunch of stuff here. But, but the point is, there's some activity going on here. And I want people to be aware, aware of that. Um, I think, I think that's all that I have. Hold on a minute. Give announcements. There's a, uh, county council meeting September twenty-second. That'll be a work session. My office hours on the twenty-seventh will be canceled. I will be out of town on vacation. October sixth, there's a county council work session. October tenth, the offices, county offices, we close and observe some slum stay. County council regular meeting on October twentieth. And then I have my office hour, six to seven, on, on October twenty-fifth.
I told the first, Emmanuel of Christian Willis St. Charles Catholic Church, we have the blessing of pets for St. Francis Day. You can bring your child if you want to get blessed, if they're really bad or really, the little children, all the, uh, cats and dogs and snakes that we get. So, it's open to everybody at eleven o'clock. On the steps, you don't have to go into the church, because most of it, like, from low to people came in.
First, October first.
Eleven o'clock, Saturday, October first.
Please say my dog's name. Is there anything else to be discussed?
I don't know.
I didn't answer. But I'll take it. All in favor?